Regular meeting of the Orient Township Board of Trustees to order for our Monday, June 1st. We made it to June. Praise the Lord. Josh, we're gonna need some prayer praise on that. It's been crazy, another busy day, a surreal weekend. And we're here to do the work of our community. So thank you everyone for joining us. If you're here either on the go to meeting or if you're watching us on ON TV, we're glad you're here. I'm gonna explain the rules to you in a minute, but before I do that, I guess I will do that and then we'll then we'll do the invocation and pledge. We've been meeting like this for a couple of months now. Our plan is to continue meeting like this through the month of June. All of our boards and commissions have been meeting virtually in conjunction in accordance with the governor's orders. So, but that doesn't mean we don't want your participation and we do, we want your participation. So there are lots of opportunities for you to engage with us, just like if you were downstairs at the boardroom here at Township Paul. The first way, so what I'm gonna be doing is giving you several opportunities throughout the meeting to give public comment on items, just like we would downstairs, but I'm gonna tell you how you can do that right now. Because there's a few ways and if there's something that you'd like to just type us and to be right into the record, you can do that and I'll give you that email address. So we will give, well, I'll take general public comment on our agenda. It's the right after we pay our bills at the top, that's for non-agenda items. And the ways you can do that is if you're on the computer screen, I can see you, you can raise your hand and I'll recognize you and you can unmute yourself at that time and give your public comment. If you are on the phone and we didn't see your face, I will ask if there's anyone on the line that would like to speak and go ahead and unmute yourself. And and then there's also a chat box on the go to meeting. You could type a message in the chat box. And then the last way you could give us public comment is you could send an email to the email address, board, B O A R D, at orient township.org. And that's also on the screen of the feed at Ori Neighbors Television. I can see that here on my other screen. They have the email posted there. So if you want to give us any general public comic or if you want to give us comment on a very, on a specific item, you could go ahead and send that email. And if you don't wanna verbally speak and when we get to that item, we will read it. So with that, that's the instructions. It's a little lengthy, but I want to make sure everybody understands the rules of engagement here and knowing that it is important that we hear from you if you want us to hear from you. We always start our meetings with invocation and pledge of allegiance. And tonight we are joined by Pastor Josh Yates, who is some undisclosed location in his vehicle. But he's buckled and that's good. So thanks Pastor Josh.
I'm part two.
Community church and also he's been really active in our COVID local response team. So thanks Pastor Josh for your efforts and lead in being a leader in our community. So if you would please lead us in with an invocation and then we will all say the pledge of allegiance together.
Absolutely. Let's pray together. Father, we're just so thankful for, just like Chris said, we are, we're in June now. And God, we just thank you for how you brought us through, but we thank you for the leadership in our community that has so aptly led us and helped us to continue moving forward in the middle of times that would none of us have ever seen. There is no manual for how to move through a pandemic like this, Lord, but I'm just so thankful for the Orion community, Lord, that has come together in so many different ways, from a food truck to supporting local businesses, to our township board and trustee and our supervisor who is so concerned about the citizens here in Orion Township and the phone calls that have been made to our seniors and just how we have seen really your hands and feet all over this community. And I'm just so thankful for that, God, and I I look at with anticipation for what you have for us in the future as we see numbers going down for this illness. And so, Lord, we just ask that that would continue. We pray that that would continue and that, Lord, we would just continue to stay healthy. And we would see this community specifically in our state at large bounce back in great and mighty ways. Lord, we love you. We ask for wisdom in every single decision that's made tonight with our board and trustees. And Lord, may you just grant them wisdom. We thank you for who you are and we just praise you and we just, so we can't say thank you enough. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please rise and state the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. I hope you didn't all realize that my shirt's untucked, but it's untucked, so I'm guilty. All right, we're living in a virtual world. It's the top half. Hopefully it looks okay. All right. We have an agenda tonight and I apologize to the clerk that I forgot to have allow you to call roll. I noted that the board member.
There you go.
Will you go ahead and just call the role just so we can make sure we have that noted in the minutes, please?
Supervisor Barnett?
Here.
Treasurer Steele?
Here.
Trustee Flood?
Here.
Trustee Staimo?
Here.
Trustee Del Rimpel? She's here and trustee Bernie?
Here.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you. So all seven board members are here, full, full quorum. We have, we'll start tonight by like we start all our, oh, the regular agenda. I almost was gonna go to public comment. We need to pay the bills first. I will share my screen on and off throughout the meeting so that those of you who are watching from home can kind of see what we're doing. So I'll do my best. I have a few different screens in front of me, so thanks for in advance for your patience. But you should be able to see the agenda on the screen. And by the way, if you are at home and watching, everything that we see, you can see. If you go to our website, they'll be able to pull up this information as well. So with that, I would entertain a motion to pay the bills. And I can't see your faces, so you'll have to just unmute yourself and.
I'm making motion. If that's okay, Chris.
Yep, moved by Steele and is there support?
Or.
I gotta, I'm sorry to make a motion yet. I'd like to make a motion to pay the bills on the total amount of $720,125.24 with a comment and then since it was already supported, I'll just go right to my comment. That the big portion of this bill was $300,000 to pay our sewer bill this month.
Okay, and it was supported by Bernie. Are there any other comments or questions from the board regarding the bills? I just moved it off the wrong screen, so let me. Seeing none, is there any public comment regarding the bills? Hearing and seeing none, I will ask the clerk to call the role.
Steele then Bernie?
Yes.
Yes.
Del Rimpel then Flood?
Yes.
Yes.
Staimo then Barnett?
Yes.
Yes.
Schultz, yes.
Okay, the bills are paid. That motion passes seven zero. Now we go to public comment. This is the first of several opportunities you'll have to address the board. And I would, again, I'll just, first, if you are, and I appreciate, by the way, those of you that are here in the meeting that you have your cameras turned off until you want to be activated. Makes for a better viewing experience for the people watching on ON TV. So thank you for doing that before I even asked. Is there anyone that's here in the meeting that would like to give public comment about anything that's not on tonight's agenda? Go ahead and unmute yourself if you'd like to and or turn on your camera. So I'll just give that a minute. If you, anyone want to give public comment? All right, I don't hear or see anyone, anyone on the phone. I'll go there. Anyone on the phone want to give comment on anything at this time? Okay, there's nothing in the chat bubble. Penny, is there anything on the email? No emails. Okay, so we will move on to approval of tonight's agenda.
Chris, I'd like to move an item down.
Okay.
I would like to move a seven C, accept employee resignation to pending eight C.
Okay. Are you sure?
Yes, I want to fill in the date unless I can fill in that date when I, if it was under consent.
Well, I was gonna add the date. I was gonna add the date when we got to the consent.
Yes, I'd like to add June 30th as the date that was to be determined.
Then we should move that down then. We'll move it to, we'll move it to pending eight, eight C. So accept employee resignation is pending eight C. Well, is there any other changes? Go ahead, John.
I'd like to bring down seven D and E.
Okay. Those will be planning commission and redevelopment ready. Is there any other proposed changes, additions or a motion to approve as amended?
Mr. Supervisor, I make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Support.
All right, moved by Flood and supported by Staimo to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor, say aye or give a thumbs up.
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, seven zero. So that takes us to tonight's consent agenda, which consists of the following items. Showing my screen again. Tonight's consent agenda is approving the regular minutes of our meeting on May 18th. The Jocelyn Road pathway recommendation of award. And I did see Jessica Katers was on board, one of our engineers. And Jeff Stout, our director of public services. That's exciting. And those are the two items on the consent. The other three were moved down to pending. So is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Supervisor, I move to, I'll support.
Who made the motion?
I believe it was Penny, I think.
Yeah.
Moved by Schultz, supported by Flood.
I have a comment too.
Yeah, go ahead with your comment.
I didn't want to bring it down because we had brought plenty down, but I'm just really anxious about, excited about the new path going in on Jocelyn Road. And luckily it was not one that was retracted because a lot of the grants were retracted, but that was a trust fund grant, so that the grant wasn't retracted. That was a couple hundred thousand dollars to help build that. And that they expected it to be starting after July 4th and the project's gonna take four to six weeks. And there's a pre-planning meeting this week and that segment of the trail will be closed, which is really busy right now. It's between Heights Road and Indianwood and there is no alternative route for that. So I hope the public will bear with us as they, during that construction period, which is coming up. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all your efforts on trail stuff, Donnie and Jessica and Jeff as well. All right, any other, any board comments or questions on those two items? Any public comment on the consent agenda? First, I will go to the video. If you want to talk about the minutes or the safety path, please unmute yourself and turn your video on if you'd like. Seeing no one or hearing no one, I'll, I'll go to the phones. Anybody on the phone want to unmute themselves? Okay, and I, there's nothing in the chat bubble and it doesn't look like there's anything in the email either. So we will ask the clerk to call the role on the consent agenda, please.
Flood?
Yes.
Staimo then Barnett?
Yes.
Schultz then Steele, I'm sorry, Chris. Schultz then Steele, yes?
Yes.
Bernie then Del Rimpel?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes seven zero. Next item on tonight's agenda, we're in the pending eight A, which is the resolution temporary relocation of the absent voter counting board. Clerk Schultz.
So I want to thank trustee Bernie and trustee Flood for meeting an election commission meeting. And we need to move the absent voter counting board to the address where the fire station number four is located for the August 4th election and the November 3rd 2020 election. Due to COVID-19, the Oakland County Sheriff's Office will be occupying the space currently used for the absent voter counting board. An election commission meeting was held on Wednesday, May 27th, 2020 to ask for a recommendation to move the absent voter counting board for the remainder of the 2020 elections to fire station number four located at 465 South Baldwin Road. You have the resolution that's included with your board packet and I will read that resolution. But first I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution for a temporary relocation of the absent voter counting board to fire station number four for the August 4th and November 3rd 2020 election.
Support.
Okay, I'm gonna give that. I heard Flood loudest, I guess. So moved by Schultz and supported by Flood.
And this is very similar what was done when we were asked by the schools to move the Orion Oaks over to a temporary location. We did have to pass a resolution. The election commissioners make the recommendation to the board and the board has the final authority to approve that resolution or deny it. We also had to do something similar when we moved from the Genjiville Community Church over to the Zion Community House located on Baldwin Road across the street. So the resolution is entitled, the Charter Township of Orion Board of Trustees Resolution, Temporary Relocation of Absent Voter Counting Board for August 4th and November 3rd 2020 Elections. Be it resolved at the Orient Township Board of Trustees, which includes the members of the Election Commission, trustee Mike Flood and trustee Brian Bernie sets the following location for absent voter counting board to fire station number four at 465 South Baldwin Road, Lake Orion, Michigan, 48362. Be it further resolved, this is a temporary location for the 2020 election year due to COVID-19. The Oakland County Sheriff's Office will be occupying the space currently used for the absent voter counting board. And I also want to thank our Jeff Stout has been phenomenal. We've been working in this move as well as members of the Community Programs Department, Parks and Recreation. And I'm very thankful to note that we were able to move out of the boardroom a week earlier than planned. So it was a great effort to get everything moved to the fire station, but we have the formality before we can even begin to count ballots to make sure that the board is in authorization of this resolution. And also thank you Fire Chief Rob Duke. It's been amazing that you offered that facility.
All right, thank you. It was moved and supported and yep, I agree. Thanks to everyone for helping make this possible. We need the space here for our deputies and so I'm grateful that we had a solution that was right in front of us. So any questions or comments from the board? It was moved by Schultz, supported by Flood. See no comments or questions, any public comment? Go ahead and unmute yourself if you'd like to make a public comment on us moving the AV counting board. Okay, and now I would look at the chat and the email and it does not appear there are any in either spot. Trying to stick to the way I said we'd do this. I don't see any. Okay. So I'd ask the clerk to call the role, please.
Staimo then Barnett?
Yes.
Yes, sorry.
Schultz then Steele, yes?
Yes.
Bernie then Del Rimpel?
Yes.
Yes.
Flood?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes seven zero. Next is an agenda item regarding social districts for on-premises licensees. So in light, I'm just gonna read this, in light of the 13-week stay-home order, it's very important to me and I hope this board to do everything we can to support local businesses. There hasn't been a day that's gone by in the last three weeks that I haven't talked to a local business owner that has grave concerns that they will be able to ever reopen again in light of the 13-week stay-home order. To that end, the Michigan Liquor Control Commission has approved adding outdoor service areas for existing license holders subject to local approval. Local business owners have asked for the township to support this request. In addition, the village of Lake Orion, Birmingham and Plymouth. And since I wrote this memo, at least a half dozen others are in the process of allowing this in their cities and villages and townships. So I'm asking the board to consider and approve the attached resolution to allow social districts, which would allow businesses to safely expand their service areas. Inspections for safety and compliance will still be required, but will be completed for no fee. I have met with our building official, Dave Goodlow, and our fire chief, Rob Duke, and our fire marshal, Jeff Williams. And all three of them support this initiative, including waiving the fees that would normally be consistent with this type of application. At this time, it looks like the state is going to allow this to go through October. So I'm looking for, I've attached some other documents here. This is the document that the MLCC, the Liquor Control Commission, that's who restaurants and bars need to get their licenses through. This is the document they put forward and it's in your packet for you to review as the kind of the frequently asked questions as to what they're doing and why. And then the attach is the resolution I'm asking the board to adopt that would allow me some authority to work with our fire department and our billing department to allow these businesses to open, expand their service areas. So I'd entertain a motion at this time and then we can have some discussion. Is there a motion? Donnie? Okay, go ahead, Brian.
Well, no, I was, I was gonna say I'd make the motion. I don't know the exact language that is appropriate here.
To adopt the attached resolution.
All right, I'll make a motion to adopt the attached resolution for social districts for on-premise licenses.
Support.
Part.
Okay, and sorry, Donnie. I know you had your hand up and then Brian started, so go ahead. Did you have a question? Were you trying to make a motion or?
Well, both, but my question is with the new order as of today, did I miss something? I thought the governor said that the bars and the restaurants are gonna open up the first of next week and this wouldn't be necessary. So maybe I missed something in her state of the.
Yeah, so the governor had a press conference at 3:00 PM today and she said that restaurants could open next Monday, not, not this week, next Monday. It still isn't crystal clear and I honestly haven't had a chance to read the order because I was, Jenny and I did a census live event before this. I did listen to some of the, a lot of the press conference, but she doesn't get into those specifics in the press conference. Those are gonna be found in her order. So I do believe it's still going to be necessary in that restaurants are gonna be opening with a lip, with a smaller capacity, a lighter capacity. And I heard from two restaurant owners today, one said they thought it was 25%, the other one said they thought it was 50% and I admittedly just told you I haven't read the order. I've read all the other orders, but not this one. There still will be a need and a desire and a request for these restaurants to be able to expand their, their, basically put tents up. And these could be used, in some restaurants, I've already been doing this. People have been picking up to-go food and eating outside. The restaurants, you could already do that this week. You can do that this week, but this is going to allow them to expand their service area and continue to follow the social distancing guidelines the state's put forward. So it's just another tool in the toolbox for them. I see Penny's hand up and then I'll go to Mike.
Chris, thank you for bringing this before the board. Can you just talk a little bit about what will be some of the inspections that will take place through our building department? Just to ensure that that outdoor seating area is compliant.
Yeah, it's basically gonna follow the outdoor assembly permit application that we already have in place. This is what Dave Goodlow, our building official, took that application and just tweaked it a little bit for this purpose. Assuming the board votes favorably on this, then we would do what the resolution says and in conjunction with the proposed state legislation, which is still pending and also the governor's new order, there still is an area for us to allow these restaurants to do this. So they would be inspected to make sure that if they, if they are setting up a tent, that it's safe. It's not gonna blow away, that there's the proper protection if it's near a parking lot or, or street, that there's a proper protection from vehicles and that there is proper signage. That's what the fire department does and if there's a smoke, that there is a fire extinguisher, capacity signs. So all the things like when Canterbury, for example, does an outdoor assembly that we go over and inspect their tents, we would be doing the same things for these restaurants. This would not be permanent. This would expire when the LCC is set to sunset theirs, which is, looks, looks like October now. It could even be sooner. So this is not meant to be like over many years. It's meant to be a quick way for restaurants and hopefully there's pent-up demand for our residents to get back out and support our restaurants and businesses and that they will be able to, to satisfy the hopefully increased, or hopefully the, the capacity that they, that they are hopeful to, to see when, when people are able to go out and eat starting next Monday. Mike Flood, you had your hand up next.
Thank you, Chris. The guidelines here for your, these are like a temporary use things. It's the exact same guidelines we use on the ZBA when we issue the temporary use permitting for like fireworks and things like that for farmers markets. So that's the same guidelines our fire department and, and building department follow too. Also, I think it's great that the township were waiving the permit fees. These businesses do not need to be paying any more money out. They're trying to support their families and their employees. So I think it's great that this resolution will resolve that. Thank you.
Yep, thank you, Mike. And that was, I, I needed the support from fire and building to do that and they both wholeheartedly supported it, both those departments losing some revenue potentially to do this. Go ahead, John.
Just a couple of things. So I didn't think our outdoor assembly or cafes, when we looked at it, was that onerous to begin with, but there's still things in there, especially the safety issues when I look at one of those. Like, you know, they don't conflict, they don't push people off the sidewalk, right, you know? And then, of course, there's stuff that goes with the liquor commission. I don't know some of their rules. If they're gonna be serving alcohol in these outside areas, they somehow have to coordinate it off. So hopefully that's what we're looking at too. I think we end up, when we approve the permit, we're looking that they're complying with that stuff. And then, of course, the odd, the weird one that's there, which is what we always concerned with with these outdoor permits, is complaints from the neighbors with noise and stuff like that. You know, when we look at somebody wanting to do an outdoor cafe, we basically say they can't have music piped in out there. Now that's something. I don't know what you guys are gonna do with that, but if you don't want to look at it because you want this to go fast, that's one thing. But then how are you gonna deal with the complaints from the neighbors? So that's my only concern here. I understand what you're trying to do, make things a little more streamlined, but I still think there's a few things and hopefully these guidelines will be well published that they can see what we're gonna be inspecting for.
Yeah, John, these are, it's, everything you said are great points. I agree with you. It's not onerous, but it's time is what it is for a business owner to do this. And time is something that they don't really have. The second they're able to open, they want to open and try to put money in their cash registers, you know, and not have to wait for a planning commission meeting and to get their, you know, site plan in and the site plan isn't, is. So I agree, it's not onerous, but it is, there are multiple steps and it probably at least a month if you really did it right. And you lose the entire month of June or, you know, past the 4th of July potentially unless we decided to set up a special meeting, which would cost us money unless the planning commissioners didn't want to, you know. So it's just, this is a really, I think this is a good way to do it. What, what gives me, I don't think we're acting, I don't think we're acting carelessly because this is being led by the Liquor Control Commission. This isn't being led by Chris Barnett in Orion Township saying, hey, let's be rebels here. The LCC took the lead on this and said, we know our businesses are dying in Michigan. Let's, we are taking the lead at the Liquor Control Commission to open up the rules. That's why I sort of said, hey, and you know, we were the first ones, we announced it the same time that Birmingham and Plymouth did. And like I said, now I bet you all of Metro Detroit will be following suit. The village wants to. I bet you all of Metro Detroit will be following suit. The village wants to close um. All the sidewalks and make that outdoor dining and outdoor uh retail space. Um, it's not totally done yet, but they they lose a lot of the parking and stuff, but, you know, we are doing everything we can. Um, to help the businesses and I I think that that's um, that's what's driving this, nothing else. And then, of course, we wanna make sure our residents are safe and, you know, I think there's a level of um. I think we can, and 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 your points are well taken, John and Dan, I think you and I need to talk about this. This does give me some authority um that we can put some language in the applications, Dan, if you could review this, that says. You know, if we get complaints, we have the authority to remove and review, we don't wanna, we don't want um, you know. We're not looking for these restaurants and bars to set up huge beer tents and have live bands, right? Um, and I don't think none, none of them are looking to do that, they're looking to put some high top tables and some low top tables. So that they can, instead of having twenty five people, have fifty people that can come eat. Um, so Dan, if we have some language in there that, you know, we can, we can re- we can revoke their permit at any time if if we get, you know. Or review with them if we get neighbor complaints. But I can tell you, these local business owners, we know, I know all of them by first name and John, you probably know most of them and so does most of our board. Cause they're all the people that that support, you know, everything in our community. And and they, they know they don't wanna tick off their neighbors either, so I I totally agree with with what you're saying, John, I think. This is one of those kind of situations where we're saying, trust us. Um, to to make sure that that we convey that to them, that they can't be, you know, they can't be obnoxious or they'll lose that that pro- that um. Um, privilege, so uh, good, all good stuff. Uh, Bernie, Mr. Bernie, sorry.
Um, just real quick, I, you know, I I, you guys all know my opinion on this, so I I think this is a fantastic idea. Um, thank you for taking a lead on it, Chris, and and getting this to our businesses, but I can just tell you, um. You know, as a business owner myself, you know, we are looking for every way. That we can legally do things to increase business. And, you know, I don't think that is the time that people are gonna try to skirt around a lot of um things, especially when it comes to the liquor commission. And and things like that, I mean, it's one thing to, you know, open a gym or something right now, but. Um, I I just, I I feel like this is the the best thing we could be doing right now to get these these restaurants, they're the ones that got hit the hardest, in my opinion. So if this, this is a, you know, a gift from from us to try to make this happen to them. Um, I I know it's gonna be well received and uh they desperately want it. Um, I mean, I can't speak for everybody, but just the same thing with you, Chris, you know, talking to business owners and restaurant owners and them saying, you know, what can we do? How can we do it? What hoops do I need to jump through to to open and to just actually do business? Um, I I don't think we're gonna have many issues, if if any at all, um, at least I hope not. But um, again, I I applaud uh Chris and and, you know, whoever was involved in pulling this, Dave Goodlow, everybody. Um, so thank you for for making this happen because it's the right thing to do.
Thank you, Brian. Any other comments from the board? Any public comment on this agenda item? First, I'll go to the um, if you're on the line or video either, you can unmute yourself now and introduce yourself if you'd like to give a comment on this. Uh, nothing on, uh, no comments there, uh, nothing on the chat bubble. Uh, let's see, anything on the email? Mine's refreshing. No, I don't see anything on the emails, so, okay, um, it was moved by um Bernie and supported by Flood. It's a resolution, so we will do a roll call vote. Clerk Schultz, would you please call the roll?
Barnett then Schultz?
Yes.
Yes, Steele then Bernie?
Yes.
Yes.
Now Rumpel then Flood?
Yes.
Yes.
Stimol?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone, um, and I'll keep you posted um on that. If you have questions. Uh, you know, John or anybody, you know, or ideas, um, you know how to get a hold of me. Next item on the agenda was um, I'll pull back sharing my screen here for a minute. Bernie, you're good at monitoring five screens here. Alright, um, next, let me close this here. Accepting employee resignation, um Clerk Schultz brought this down. Um, so we had an employee um submit her red- letter resignation. Um, and it says her last day of work is to be determined, um, and uh we were um. We had a a suggestion or um. I'll tell you with human resources and talking with uh. The union and uh. We had talked about a date, uh, and a last day of work of June twelfth. I know Penny wanted to bring this down, so um I will. Let you talk, Penny.
Um, yeah, the the date that I'm recommending, and I don't think it's coming from the union, Chris, they did not recommend a day. Uh, what they were recommending is that she be allowed to use her um accrued personal time. Before she's term, you know, the end of her date. And when I talked with Deanna on Friday last week, I was recommending the June thirtieth date. And so I moved to accept the resignation with regret. And authorized posting the advertisement for the vacant position. And her last day of work is going to, I'm recommending a June thirtieth date.
Okay, so the challenge with that, um, I. Is that um, this is a resignation. And someone that um frankly, I think the discussion's gonna get a little bit awkward here and I apologize to the people that are affected by this. Because normally we just accept these and move on. Uh, the reason the date of June twelfth was was discussed. Um, was because it is a resignation and uh after June twelfth, we will be paying. Uh, you know, two people, that's um the date that Penny's um person will be coming back from furlough is is June fifteenth, Monday. Uh, that would be able to assist in this vacancy. Uh, so, so then we would have two people being paid at that time going forward, so that's the, that's the challenge with this. We do have an existing memorandum of understanding with our labor union uh that vacation time and P T O time. Uh, will not be paid out this year, um, and that's an agreement with the union uh based on the um financial. Um, difficulties we are facing with our reduction in revenues and so that was one of the hard decisions we made. And the union agreed to uh, and the board made that as a, as as a, as the board, the board will remember that as well, so. Um. I can't support this, uh, I can't support the motion for that reason, so.
I would like to have a little conversation if I may.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I think where the struggle comes in for me is that Kelly's been a valued longtime employee. And she has not taken her personal time. And she also just recently had a anniversary where she accrued that um vacation time as well, so she has all. A lot of hours of unused P T O. And I, and I think that's where the struggle comes in, is she's earned those hours. She's, and this is a little bit different because I think when that memorandum of understanding was agreed upon. Chris, I, we were looking more long term and it was talked about end of the year payouts. And this is a um, a June, and she still wouldn't even to June thirtieth, she still wouldn't be able to use everything that she's earned and not used. That June thirtieth, I think, takes her about a hundred and sixty hours and currently she has um, I think, two hundred and thirty hours of. P T O as well as a hundred and twenty hours of vacation and based on the memorandum of understanding, she can't get paid out for either.
Yeah, so, I mean, look, it's, I don't know how to do this without um. Showing underneath the hood, guys, like, um, showing the ugly, that's what I'm gonna say. Uh, this is ugly and it's, it stinks because Kelly is well respected in this building. And she is a great employee and she has been a great employee. The reason she's leaving is because um, uh, it's just so ironic that um. I don't know that we can do this, I, you know, um, if you take, if you think only about the person, no brainer. But great, great employee who's being forced to leave because she can't work with Penny and Penny can't work with her. Um, you know, that's, that's the truth, it stinks to say it like that, but that's the truth. Um, and so Penny forced her out and now is asking us to go about, go around. Existing written agreement with the union and it's hard and it stinks and it's sad and it's difficult, but I don't know that we can do that. I mean, it's, it's honestly, um, you know, Penny, you're asking us to waste taxpayer dollars for a situation that you. Completely created and you admitted that last week, you admitted that, that that's what happened. So, that's the challenge here, um. John?
Uh, I guess my question is forgetting that you have this current agreement about payouts at the end of the year. But just in the past, when we've had people resign because they're gonna go take a job someplace else. Have we paid them all their uh accrued vacation time and stuff like that? Is that when they left on their own accord?
Yes, we have. Per the union contract, they're able to be paid out. Up to two hundred hours, I believe, of the P T O and then their unused um vacation time and I believe their comp time as well.
Go ahead, Donnie.
And Chris, Kelly resigned on her own, she had her own free will to resign, there was a situation that occurred one day. And she chose to resign, that was her choice, no one forced her hand. She wrote her own letter of resignation and she resigned.
The board will hear more about this story because there is a victim here. Um, Donnie, go ahead.
Um, I think that, just to, a point of clarification is that um, in the event that she. The resign date is the end of the month. She won't be here to serve the township at all as of today, starting today, is that right? That as of today, through the end of the month, she'll be on the time clock, but she won't physically be here. Serving the public, is that what I understand? And then I have another question.
I believe that would be correct.
Okay, so we would be having to pay somebody, plus we probably would need to fill that position, so we would be paying two people. Which to me is counterintuitive of everything that we have just done. To put everybody on furlough to cut expenses, so I, I struggle with that, it's illogical. And um, and the reason why we wrote the memorandum of understanding was to circumvent. Paying out uh P T O and vacation for the same reason, which was to um. Save our budget and so that was part of ta- writing the memorandum. Was to save money within our budget and so this again, to spend more money. Against our M O U is also counterintuitive of everything that we just went through over the last month. And I don't know, I'm sure everybody doesn't have their memorandum of understanding with them, but um I pulled it up today. And it was dated on the eighth of May and it says that the union have agreed to forego the entitlement of P T O. Uh, for all employees and vacation payout for two thousand and twenty. So, um, I would agree with, that that I don't agree with paying out through the end of the month because. Um, of trying to save money for the township. Thank you.
Mike?
What my concern is, and I I don't even, I I don't even wanna concern about this individual, I'm talking about setting a precedence for future. I'm always concerned about when you do things like this, it gets set a precedence and I'm always concerned of that. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I think the frustration I have is, none of this was fun. This was terrible, this was the worst thing I've had to do in eight years, is to furlough people, have tough decisions. Um, some of you know, I mean, some of you know, and I'm not saying this to get a pat on the back, but my car was here till ten o'clock at night. Every night for five weeks in a row, not because I was sitting in here goofing around. We were making hard decisions with limited people working in this building and this was the hard decision and. I'm just really frustrated because Penny forced this person to leave and. Told her last week, don't worry, you're gonna be taken care of, Kelly, it's so weird, it's like the person that forced her to leave is telling her on the back end, she's gonna be taken care of. And that's what Kelly told us and 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 Penny, you don't have the authority to tell her that, nor do I autonomously have the authority. It's the board's decision and that's what I told her when I talked to her last night.
Chris, at every turn, I talked to Dan Kelly on Friday and I also talked to Deanna Friday and we had agreed on that date. And that's why Kelly was told that date and then it changed today when I was contacted by Deanna. So I've reached out, I know I don't have the authority, Chris, but I reached out to Dan, Dan, did we talk on Friday? And Deanna, we had a three-way conversation about what was taking place, so it it's not something I'm acting on my own on, Chris. I I I'm making a recommendation based on how much time she has to be able to be allowed to use some of that up. And you can think about it any way that you want to, but the facts are she willingly put in her resignation. And that's what Che- Kelly chose to do and I agreed with her choice.
Why did she leave, Penny?
She left because she was frustrated working in the department and the demands that were being made on her time and her performance. And she said she couldn't work in that environment any longer.
Yeah, it's been an ongoing issue and unfortunately, um, the 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 one thing I've learned through all this. Um, and it's not just this, there's been lots of situations, but it is clear that when it comes to personnel. It's clear in the law that the supervisor has authority over all personnel. Except the clerk and the treasurer, but I do have authority over the staffs of the clerk and the treasurer's office. Um, per statute, um, we have to make tough decisions, my my challenge is. Um, everything about this was unfortunate, Kelly wanted to furlough, she volunteered to furlough, Penny wouldn't allow her to furlough. And then, however you wanna look at it, the pressures that were put on her or the bullying or the anger. That was continuing to be thrown her way forced her to not be able to work in this environment, I feel terrible, I'm heartbroken. Um, I feel terrible that we have to talk about this on live TV. Um, it's the one unfortunate part about this is that we have, we we follow the law, that's not unfortunate to follow law, but the law is clear that. Um, you know, we, we're a public body, we have to talk about this in public, um. The challenge is to, do I wanna pay Kelly? Absolutely. How do we pay her when we have an existing document signed by the union and the township and approved by the board? To say, we're not paying out P T O and vacation time, that's my challenge. So to say we're gonna have an employee stay on to through August fifteenth or July or June thirtieth or sometime in mid-July. When they're never gonna come back to work here, but just so they can stay on and collect pay, really goes against what this township board decided. And so, does it stink? Is it harsh for this poor person that I think is a wonderful person? Yes, absolutely. Um, do we have the authority to just do it and pay her? I guess, I think we do, I think Dan will probably tell us we can do whatever we want. Um, the challenge is the precedent that it sets, basically the document that we worked so hard on and the cuts we worked so hard to make. Don't really mean anything and what if we didn't like the person and what if we did like the person and it's like, there's so many variables. That's why I sort of lean on the actual agreement, with the written agreement that we have with the union and I don't know how we go outside of that. Dan, do you, you wanna talk a little bit too? I mean, do we have authority to just ignore that or do we?
Well, that, you know, look at, I mean, the board can do whatever it wants generally, but I will tell you this. That if you read the language of the M O U signed with the union, it's very clear that all employees. And she was a union employee at the time it was agreed to, agreed to forego P T O for two thousand and twenty. And also their vacation through May eighth, two thousand and twenty to May seventh, two thousand and twenty one. So the clear language of the M O U is to give up, now, there's no doubt about it, I don't think anybody anticipated that somebody was going to quit. Three weeks later, but the fact of the matter is, those benefits have been foregone by union employees. It's properly signed by the union business representative and therefore enforceable.
Chris, what are you recommending is the date?
Uh, John, go ahead.
I'm back to that original question. That memorandum of understanding, I thought, said you can't get paid out at the end of the year for unused vacation time. It still encourages people to take their, as far as I know, we're still wanting people to take their vacation, even though I know that can cause a lot of scheduling problems because everybody's going to be squashed up here these last six months. But that's still, they can still take their vacation. Now, that being said, that's why I asked this earlier. When somebody resigns, it's the same way in their vacation, it sounds like. They might have vacation at that time. So they're either allowed to take it and that's their two weeks. So basically, once they turn in a resignation, they're done. And if they got two weeks of vacation, that's basically the next two weeks and their official resignation date comes after that. It does sound like this is not setting a precedence that this is what you've done in the past. It's at least as far as a vacation goes. Now, correct me if I'm wrong. If that's not what we're doing, then I might have more of a problem with it. But that's what you've done in the past. I don't see why it's any different here.
We have allowed people to use their accrued personal time. But the difference is, is that there's a memorandum of understanding. And Kelly did ask to furlough and I told her that she couldn't furlough because we needed the full-time voter registration clerk. And Alyssa was the lowest person on the um, schedule. And she last hired first out.
What we were proposing um, was we don't pay two people for the same job. The date that, that we would start doing that is June 15th. So basically, we were proposing to give two weeks of she's not coming in anymore, um, time off. You know, to use PTO or vacation. It doesn't really matter, obviously. And then that would end on June 12th because on June 15th, we will have another person doing that job. So that's, that's um, that's why we looked at it that way. Mike?
Did I hear a second on the motion? I don't believe I heard a second on the motion.
No, you didn't.
Okay.
You're right, Mike.
Is there a second? Is there an alternative motion?
I seconded for discussion. So since we've been having this, I thought somebody already seconded it. I'm sorry.
Okay. Is there any other discussion by the board? Um, Julia, go ahead.
Because this is such a unique time for everybody and everything. Um, I think it's worth talking about the compromise of the, the two weeks. It's unfortunate that all these things have come together all at one time, but um, yeah, I mean, I think it's something that we should at least talk about.
Mike?
I will support the motion for June 30th, but I will support a June 12th date.
Okay, um. It's just, I just want to say one more thing and then I'll open up the public comment. This is a toxic situation that was created in the clerk's office by the clerk. And now I'm looking like the bad guy and I clear, and I, I care a lot about this person. So that's the really, I, I'm telling you, I'm very upset and offended and frustrated that Penny, you would make statements like, we'll take care of you. That's exactly what you told her unless you, unless she lied to us. Don't worry, you're going to be taken care of. You don't have the authority to do that. You're the one that forced her to leave. You're the one that ran her out of this job where she wanted to work for the next five years until she retired. That's what she told multiple people here. But instead, she wasn't able to because she couldn't work in a toxic environment. And now you have promised her something or told her something and are trying to say, be sweet about it. And now we have to be the voice of reason. And I agree, it's, it's terrible. It's just not fair. You can't play both sides and I'm calling you out on it. And I'm not wanting to fight with you and this isn't, I don't want to create some big war. I'm just saying, truth is the truth is the truth. And that's the truth, what I just stated. And that's unfortunate that someone's going to lose out, but we had to make really tough decisions. And um, to try to save money and we did. And, and uh, that's what the MOU says. That's what our attorney is telling us the definition of the MOU says. Well, the board can always do anything they want. But I'm just really frustrated that you're the person that created the problem and now you're trying to be the hero here and it's really frustrating to me. Um, I'll open it up to public comments. Is there any public?
I actually, Chris, would like to respond to because I did reach out to HR and I did reach out to Dan Kelly on Friday. And that date was looked at together on Friday. And that may be where Kelly was coming from. And I'm a bit surprised that at close to six o'clock, I'm getting a call because um, from Deanna that the date can't be the 30th. It has to be the 12th. So I did what I needed to do, reaching out to HR and reaching out to Dan. And Kelly has been a good employee. I have to agree with you 100%. But there was an occasion when she chose to leave and that's her choice. She did want to furlough and she couldn't furlough because the demand is there in that department for a voter registration clerk, especially because of the election process. We're a very busy department and, and we all work really hard, but Kelly made the choice to leave. And Chris, I'm not blaming you um, at all, but I'm saying that we have an opportunity to keep this valued employee um, and keep her until June 30th because she has so much accrued personal and vacation time. And we can't pay her out. And I'm not trying to be a hero here. I'm trying to be reasonable with this one circumstance.
I just want to say, I like, I see you, Donnie. You having a conversation with Deanna and Dan isn't making it, they didn't make a decision. They don't have the authority to. And neither one of them, I've asked them directly and specifically, did you tell Penny that she could say June 30th? And neither of them, so you telling them you'd like it to be June 30th, it doesn't mean it's set in stone and give you the authority to tell the employee that. That's the issue we have here. It's another mess that's been created that now we have to clean up and do it in a very public manner, which is frustrating. Um, so um, they did not tell you that yes, June 30th is the date because they don't have the authority to. And so, so just you telling them you'd like that to be the date doesn't mean, hey, I talked to the attorney in HR, doesn't make it the truth. Yeah, you talked to them. They, they didn't say yes and they don't have the authority to say yes. Donnie?
I, I just kind of wanted to piggyback on that is that to me, that if it's HR's job and your job and the attorney's job, I guess I don't understand um, why Penny would, you would undermine their jobs. That's what I have a concern with. To me, you know, I, it would be like me telling, I don't know, Jeff how to put in uh, water lines. I mean, it's just so out of my job scope that it would, it would just um, be, it would be undermining Jeff. So I wouldn't do it. So I, I don't think it's fair that um, that you would do that, I guess, is what I'm trying to say, that you would.
Because the employee approached me.
And H, I don't understand why it would be where you would involve with HR.
Because they, yeah.
Discussing anything because it's not your job.
Because the employee approached me and asked me about their unused time. And, and that was a conversation had in my department. So fair enough, guys.
Okay, all right. So um, there's a motion in support, moved by Schultz, supported by Stimo to accept the resignation effective June 30th, post the vacancy, which technically we wouldn't be able to post the vacancy while we have a current employee. So the vacancy wouldn't be able to be posted until after June 30th in this case either. Is there, I, I do want to go to public comment. I'm sorry. Is there anyone on the, on the, on the video or the phone that would like to give public comment? You can unmute yourself right now, please. Is there anyone, um, let me see on the, there's no chats. We did let Kelly know that we were, we would be talking about this tonight. We didn't think we would be talking about it like this. Uh, but we did let her know it was on the agenda and the date would be uh, nailed down tonight. And she was unable to, I, I, I actually think that she should, should let the board know what's going on and why, why it happened and things like that. So um, that's her, that's her right to do that. Um, but it doesn't look like she was able to do that. She was dealing with a family um, conflict this afternoon that I don't have the liberty to share with the board. So that said, um, the motion was moved by Schultz and supported by Stimo. Um, let's do a roll call on this one, please.
Schultz, yes, steel?
No.
Bernie, then Del Rempel?
No.
No.
Lud, then Stimo?
No.
Yes.
Burnet?
Uh, no. Is there an alternative motion? Donnie?
I'd like to make a motion to um, accept the employee resignation uh, with the last day of work to be on the 12th of June and to authorize uh, HR to post um, for the position and um, I would say internally as first.
Okay, uh, is there support?
I'll support the motion for discussion.
Go ahead.
I do not believe in posting internally. We do not run a closed shop at Orient Township. We went through this numerous contract negotiations. The public needs to be advertised also. The Orient resident, the Orient taxpayer deserves just as much shot at the job here as anybody else.
Donnie?
I, I'll amend my motion. You're, you're right, Mike, internally and externally, they post that position.
Thank you, and I will amend my support.
Okay. Is there discussion on this motion? Um, I don't see any from the board. Uh, Donnie, go ahead.
I just want, I guess, um, just a clarification of we have 10 people on furlough. Is that like the, are they the first choice or is it, you posted, is it in addition to those 10 people? It's confusing to me because I have never um, been a part of furloughing or laying off or all at the same time.
You want me to answer that, Chris? There is a callback, yeah, there is a callback procedure in the union contract um, that could be applicable here, although these were voluntary layoffs or furloughs. So I don't believe that it actually applies. Uh, but we'll have to discuss that internally as to whether or not any of the furloughed employees um, actually qualify to come back because you do have to qualify for that position. And I believe that there, um, well, I think there is a furloughed employee from the clerk's office as well.
There is.
Yep, um, the furloughed employee from the clerk's office is a part-time employee. We have reached out to other employees and they're not interested. We, it, it's going to be messy. Just going to throw it out there. They don't want to work in the clerk's office. Some that have been, you know, so, so that's the challenge that we're going to have. So uh, we will follow the union contract. We will take Dan Kelly's advice to make sure that we're following the contract. And um, so uh, and we'll file the contract in the existing MOU. So that's, that's what I can say on that. Is there any other discussion from the board? Any public comment on this? Okay, I see no, there are no emails. And there are no chats. So um, I'm sorry, guys. I'm sorry to the board members. I'm sorry to the public. This has been an ongoing problem and I'm embarrassed and I wish that we didn't have to air our dirty laundry, but unfortunately we do sometimes from time to time. I'm hopeful um, that we can get some resolution in this, uh, having employees feeling comfortable in the jobs that they do here.
Chris, I want to say that not once have I been asked to meet with you or HR if there's been a problem. Not once. And if there is a problem and employees are talking to you, then you need to engage me in that for resolution. And not one time has Kelly asked to meet with you or HR or me at all. And if had that have been the case, I would have been glad to meet. So you're making, you're making this out to be something that is ongoing and toxic, but not once have I been asked to meet with you or HR regarding this.
That's, that's just, that's just not accurate. That is a bold, bold-faced lie. That is just 100% inaccurate. Um, I think the people on this phone that work in this, the people on this meeting that work in this office know that that's not true. We have had multiple people leave the clerk's office for the same reasons. Um, they have disclosed that to us. It's been an ongoing issue. And uh, since I've been here, since before I've been here actually, since previous supervisors have told me. And so um,
Chris, I've not been asked to meet with you once. That's the truth.
That is not true.
Tell me where it happened.
I will, I will get you that information and I will.
I would love to see it.
I will also say this. I will also.
I would love to see it.
Maybe not every time, but almost every time uh, in, during the last few months of the COVID crisis, when information has been shared confidentially with directors and stated multiple times, this information is confidential. This information is confidential. Does everyone understand this information is confidential? That information has been leaked to our employee group almost every time I've said that. During the COVID crisis, when we were making big decisions that affect the financial stability of this township, they came from the clerk. The clerk shared private confidential information from our May closed session of this board where we discussed the union contract, the potential, the proposed MOU. That information went directly to the clerk's office stack and came directly to the rest of the union. She violated the Open Meetings Act. She violated the trust of this board and her oath of office. That is a fact. That is not disputed. That is a 100% fact. That's unfortunate. We have a challenge. We have a communication issue. The clerk hears what she wants to hear. We have gone, we have, I could line up people that will tell you they have tried to address the situation. I'm happy um, to have other people come in. Matter of fact, we hired a company to assist us to resolve these issues that we have ongoing that continue. Um, everything I just told you are facts. If, I would encourage the board members to talk to the employees that work for you. We are their bosses collectively. Get their, get their take on it. Get their feedback. Don't take it just from me. Um, but it's a huge problem. It's a problem that we have a, a full-time elected official that is not a member of the union that acts very often more of a union member than some of the people that are in the union. That's a problem. Um, and it can't continue to happen. And I don't want to ever call this out again. Uh, Penny and I have been getting along great for the last year or so. Um, but these are facts. We are running into, we're fighting ourselves. We should be fighting together and we are fighting ourselves.
Chris, this is, this is ridiculous because you have not approached me on this and I would have been prepared tonight had you. We are discussing one issue and I would be happy to discuss the others, the others in closed session. Dan Kelly was a part of that conversation as well as Barb Armstrong and as well as Tandem Graves regarding um, a generalization of a comment. And you actually disclosed a lot of confidential information in that meeting.
Yeah, that's, that's just, that's just, again, a lie.
True. Yeah. So we can go back and forth like this and act like third graders and accuse and demean. But until you show the facts and present them, it's the world according to Chris. So do you want to head down this path? I don't at this point, but I would be happy to add it to the agenda and discuss it further when both people have an opportunity to prepare. And I have not been called into the supervisor's office to discuss anything regarding Kelly with you. So if it is ongoing, that is new information to me. She chose to leave.
Okay, that's we will end this conversation for now. There are two distinct different opinions. And I will tell you, members of this board, please do your homework.
Yes, please do your homework. Agree. Please do your homework. Talk to Kelly.
Talk to all of our. Talk to all of our employees and find out what's the truth. And I and I am not doing this to showboat. There's no reason to do it. I don't want to fight. I've said that over and over. But the truth is the truth is the truth. Period. All right, um. The motion was made by Steel and supported by Flood, June twelfth uh to accept the resignation effective June twelfth and to post both internally and externally per the union contract. And also we will look at the union callback procedure with our labor attorney, Dan Kelly, uh to make sure we are following that. Um uh please call the role clerk Schultz.
Steel?
Yes.
Bernie?
Yes.
Del Rempel?
Yes.
Flood?
Yes.
Stimo?
Yes.
Barnett?
Yes.
Schultz, no.
Yeah, that passes six one. Kelly will be missed. And I'm sorry, Kelly, you didn't hear any of that. And I implore you, Kelly, to talk to this board.
Yep.
On your appearance. Um next item on tonight's agenda is a planning commission resignation. Uh this item was brought down by Mr. Stimo. Uh we have a letter um from someplace here uh from I don't know where it's at. Judy Ryan informing uh of her resignation of the planning commission. She's unable, sorry, she's unable to get further notice. Um she's regrets, she's unable to fulfill her term, but um due to family obligations, it's possible to continue. But an honor to serve and she's has um been interested in local governments for a while, learned a lot during the short time she's been involved. Um so that uh we accepted that um resignation with regret and thank Ms. Um Ryan for her service. Uh and I would uh throw it to you, Mr. Stimo, because you uh wanted to bring this down.
Yeah, now I'm not saying, oh, we can't accept a resignation. It is what it is. I I do have to say though that when somebody comes on the planning commission, it's not an easy ramp up, right? It takes some time. And the last few appointees we've had has not been that great. We've had difficulties with. They didn't show up for a lot of meetings and they resign and we gotta get somebody new. And now we're doing it again. So that is what it is. But now to go and say to appoint Kim Urbansky who, as I know, is you're gonna be helping out and probably become a trustee or then basically you're gonna be in the same situation in November. Why? Why go through that? Why can't we just advertise the position? There's been some other good applicants in the past. Um so I'm not, and and I it's not that I have anything against Kim, but I do have against this probability that she'll only be able to serve a couple of months and then she's gone too. And you're gonna have to replace her. Um so that's why I don't really want to appoint Kim Urbansky at this time to the planning commission. I like to open it up to some of the others. So and then again, it's just kinda trying to strengthen the continuity of the planning commission a little better here and keep people, you know, that are willing to make a commitment for a while, learn about it so they can be good planning commissioners. So that's my only thing. I say we accept it, but then advertise the position for for new appointees.
Okay, um I appreciate that, John. Um I'll tell you that um Kim has expressed extreme interest in getting more involved. Um I I know you know this. I served on the planning commission for about the same amount of time before I ran for supervisor. Um and it was a great place for me to get get my bearings and understand things and um um so I think I I think she'd be a good fit and she has expressed interest in the past and and currently does as well. If she's successful uh then yes, in seven months, we will be uh six months, we'll be looking for a replacement again. Uh but she's willing to step in. Um and so that's 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 why I that's why I put it in. I uh I think you know this and the rest of the board probably knows, but if you don't, it's not really easy um getting people to fill vacancies on our um boards, commissions um or and volunteer positions. Um especially because sometimes when we get busy, they require a lot of time. Uh so I'm grateful that uh we have someone that's been asking that um is I think is great greatly qualified. Um it is within my authority to to appoint um members to the planning commission and the ZBA for the statute. Um it is um it's not just a recommendation. I I know and I but I appreciate your point, John. Um but what I think is the vacancy is immediate. I think I know I know because she told me she can start serving immediately. Um what you're proposing is a great idea, but we'll take time uh to advertise, to get interest, to vet candidates. When we have a great candidate ready to jump in and serve, I think that that's um something we should do. So that's why I'm recommending her and uh and I and we constantly talk about if you're interested to fit turn in an application um so that we have one on file knowing what your interest is uh if you're interested in in these boards. So Donnie?
Uh you said six months, but the it says twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-two. So I just if you could clarify that. And then do you have any other um people that have filled out an application uh for the planning commission like in the wings at all?
Not not at this not at this time. I have um uh Julie's not here for me to ask that, but um I asked her and we did not have any uh current uh in the wings, if you will. So uh the reason it says that is because that's when um Judy's term ended. So she would be finishing the rest of Judy's term except if, you know, she decided to resign, step down, just like any planning commission member, or if she was obviously elected to the board. Um she wouldn't be continuing to serve on the planning commission. So then there would be a vacancy. Um. I like the idea of continuing to promote that we are, you know, always looking for volunteers and having sort of a a roster in the wings. Um she's willing to step in right now, which will, I know that uh we have immediate we have lots of things coming down the pipe, you know, I think Tammy is on or she was earlier. So it'd be nice to to have that seat filled uh sooner than later. Yes, Julia?
How long do we typically hold on to applications for for these kinds of seats?
I think Julie uh um well, the clerk's office takes them in and then and then they get to my desk at some point. Um and then Julie Savard has a book here. I don't know that she throws them out. Usually people get appointed or if we have an opening and we call them and they moved or they're not interested, then we remove, you know, we we take it away. But it's not like we every month or six months or year we purge. Um so.
I don't understand why she was, I'm sorry, I don't understand why she would step down if she was a a trustee because then would she be the board slash planning commission this or would you swap it around as it?
Well, I mean, I I look, I I don't want to get
You shouldn't speculate like that, you guys.
I don't want to get into the election talk. I mean, that's
No kidding.
I I um but but yeah, I mean, it's at at that point, it's up to us to we when when the new board is seated is when we start discussing planning, you know, the the committees and and stuff like that. So this has
One thing doesn't have to do with the other. I don't think that's appropriate.
Mike and then Don, Mike then back to Donnie.
Yeah, I want uh our attorney, Dan Kelly, to 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 clarify the the uh statutory obligations of the of a uh charter township supervisor that they have the authority to appoint uh on those two commissions. Dan, would you kind of clear the air a bit?
Sure, the 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 supervisor makes the appointment, but there is a requirement of it being approved by the Board of Trustees. That's why the supervisor is here asking for the approval tonight.
Donnie? And then Penny.
I guess it, I wasn't playing politics and determining who is going to win or not win. My question was, you said six months per appointment, but the addendum, I mean, the um agenda summary says twelve thirty thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-two. So if we only want it for six months, then we should say six months. And that's that's my, I'm getting asking for a clarification.
I I don't want to, I want her, she would be taking, she would, I'm recommending we, you back to her to fill um Judy's seat. So that seat is just like the memo says expires um twenty twenty-two. Just she could leave for any reason, as could any other planning commissioner, and we would have to fill the vacancy. So I don't want to, there's no reason I agree that we shouldn't speculate on what's gonna happen. And I I didn't even really want the conversation to go there, but I said that, try to to try to respond to to John's kind of request and concern. So um. Penny, go ahead.
Um I move to accept the resignation of Judy Ryan with regret and direct the clerk to send a letter of appreciation and appoint Kim Urbansky to the planning commission for a term ending twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-two.
Pardon. Bernie's supported, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. Any other discussion on this? From the board? Any public comment? I will let you unmute. I'll be quiet. I have no emails and I have no uh chat. Oh, I'm sorry. Um. I do um I do have a note from a public comment from Kim saying, dear board, please be aware that I intend to serve out the entire remaining term on the planning commission regardless of the outcome of the election in my pursuit of a position as a township trustee. Thank you, Kim Urbansky. Okay. Uh any other public comment? Seeing none, hearing none. Um uh just uh call the roll. Just it's easier.
Del Rempel then Flood?
Yes.
Yes.
Stimo?
No.
Barnett?
Yes.
Schultz yes Steel?
Yes.
Bernie?
Yes.
Yeah, that passes. Six one, thank you. Um and thank you, Kim, for being willing to serve. Next item on the agenda is the uh was brought down. This is the last item on pending business. The Michigan Economic Development Corporation's Redevelopment Ready Communities Program Baseline Report and Resolution of Intent to Continue. And uh I'm gonna share my screen again. Okay. So um as you are probably aware, we are in the process of becoming a redevelopment-ready community through the MEDC. Um the reason to do this is uh is because um it shows that um not only are we a a one-stop-ready community through Oakland County, but it just basically um uh says that we are organized as it relates to um when people are interested in developing in our community. That's that's a kind of a high-level way for me to say it. Um. It doesn't mean we say yes to everything. It just means when there are opportunities, the state um will look first to the redevelopment-ready communities. Um the other good thing about the RRC process is it really forces us to put in place a lot of best practices. And again, I want to be clear, those best practices aren't to say yes to every developer. The the best practices are to have good procedures and policies in place as it relates to planning and development. So there's been a ton of work that's gone into this. Um and it's been led by Samantha Timko uh and Tammy Gerling. And um we've gotten assistance from uh Gary Roberts from SCS. So tonight, the request, I'm gonna just probably read this, is to receive and file the um RRC redevelopment-ready communities baseline report and approve the resolution to continue the RRC program by completing the area areas identified in the baseline report. So again, um I kind of covered this, but I will, um if you can't see it clearly, um the program is available to every community in the state of Michigan. It's designed to empower communities to enhance their economic development potential by establishing establishing a solid foundation that retains and attracts business investment talent. While RRC requires staff time to participate, it is a no-cost, technical assistance statewide certification program. Through the program, the township will be evaluated and certified as a community that has integrated transparency, predictability, and efficiency into daily development practices through a set of best practices. Uh so we must meet all of the criteria to achieve certification and we can do it in in a variety of ways. Um so we have some missing best practices. And so we've been in discussion with the MEDC on that. And uh they're asking us to, uh this is part of their process to enter into a MOU with them saying we're it's our intention to to continue to work on these things. Um. So uh we completed the self-assessment and um they produced the baseline report and they made some recommendations. And so we have to re- return to them uh within thirty days this resolution uh that we have uh that we have in front of us tonight. So that's why it's here. Um I would entertain questions or emotion, maybe a motion first, and then I'll go to John first because he brought it down. Um. So is there a motion? Donnie?
Um I move to approve the resolution to authorize the implementation of recommendations made by the MEDC that are necessarily to receive redevelopment-ready community certification and authorize the township clerk to certify and follow same. And then I just have a comment.
Okay. Okay, so it's moved by Steel and supported by Bernie. And go ahead with your comment, then I'll go to John.
Oh, you know what? I was really pleased to read um how ready that we are um once we filled out this application or this um, I guess it's an application, and that as they went through Orion Township and how we are ready, I was pleased to find that in many instances um we're business-ready, we're economic-ready, our planning department is um excellent, the response rate is good, the um turnaround time is good, the communication between the building department and the planning department are good, the CIA marketing plan is good. Um so I was um pleased with the results in which that they came up. And I with a couple of tweaks, I think that uh we would be uh all green lights and uh in an excellent position. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thanks. I'm gonna go to John now because John wanted to bring this down. Go ahead, John.
Okay, I brought it down because I just, I was hoping that all the trustees really read the assessment. And so now you're saying, yep, we agree with the assessment. We're gonna do this. And there are things in there that I'm not sure people realize you're agreeing to do. And the biggest one I see is your chapter six, basically, about a capital improvement plan, which we've never done here. I mean, you even look at the things, it's really the planning commission, it's supposed to do a capital improvement plan for the township, but it's always been held by the uh uh the Board of Trustees. That's they've always wanted that in there. And then they don't really do a big plan. They do these little ones kind of as we go. Case in point, you know, we just did a little study on now you're gonna possibly build a new township hall. So uh like I said, to put a a a redeva- a capital improvement plan in, I want to make sure that this board understands that's what they're agreeing to, that they're gonna do that. They're gonna shift that uh into basically the master plan, you know, in the planning commission. And some of the other things, whether you're really into that, I'm not really sure how you what you think we're gonna identify as our highest priority redevelopment, you know, uh parcels and stuff like that. But uh there was quite a bit in this uh uh report that I just want make want people to realize that's what you're agreeing to if you go with this, you know, in order to get everything green.
Yeah, no, that's a really good, really good point, John. I would say this, um the best ideas I have come up with in the eight years I've had the privilege of having this job have been borrowed from other people around us. Uh maybe sometime and sometimes even out of the state. Um this is a really strong program. Uh it's not a partisan, it's not a Republican thing or a Democrat thing. It's it's a really good best practice. Um and it's strong. I mean, it's really strong and it's detailed and thorough. And Tammy and Sam have put dozens is an understatement, maybe hundred is an overstatement, but may probably close to a hundred hours. Yeah, I bet you they have at least. Um when I think about how long we've been working on this. And it's things to um so so I agree, some of these things will be changes for us. Um but I think that they're good changes. I think there are things that make us more transparent, make us more um you know, these are like the state boiled down the best ideas. Um and this this started in the previous administration, uh previous gubernatorial administration, and this administration has continued to continue this program on. So um I can tell you this. And this administration has continued to, continue this program on, so, um, I can tell you this, um, we had a high-tech company, uh. Kick our tires last week because we were in this process, um, uh, high-tech jobs, engineering-type, um, company. Uh, and we, we are on the shortlist to, to look at our existing sites, um, not, you know, not saying we're developing neighborhood, you know, we're, we're putting stuff where it doesn't belong, an existing current zoning. So that's, that's the benefit of this and we originally jumped into this when we, when we launched our corridor improvement authority. Because we were going to all these shows around town and around the state, um, pitching Orion Township as a great place to invest for your business on the Brown Road corridor and, um. Multiple times we, uh, were, were encouraged to look at this RRC process because, uh, we will get the attention of, um. Of people that are looking to invest if, if we go through this and like I said, we're not kind of on the, on the, um. Recursory conversation or my opener on this, it's been really good for us to, again, look under our hood and say, wow, we're a little deficient here, we can do better here, wow, we didn't even think we could do that. Actually identified some really nice things, uh, processes, uh, that will help us, uh, going forward, even if we, we don't do the redevelopment-ready, uh, community. So, um, it's not like we're just looking to put a plaque on the wall, it's, it's been overall a really good process. Um, I, I do see Tammy's on here, I don't know if she wants to chime in, but Donnie, your hand's up and Tammy, you don't have to if you don't want to, but if you did want to say something, I, I will give you the opportunity, uh, to speak, but Donnie, go ahead.
Real quick about the capital plan and I know that, um, Ashley, our budget procurement person, has been working on one and it's, it's needed and so I'm anxious for that, so that's, even though it says that we need to do it, we are working towards that.
Yes, hi Tammy, thanks for joining us, anything you want to share with the board about this process?
Yeah, um, i- i- it really is, um, from what I can see, a wonderful gathering of information, ga- gathering of ideas, taking best practices and, and definitely, it has been many hours. But a lot of good ideas have come out of it, um, you, you, there's just so many things they want you to do that it makes you step back, look at your process, look at what you can do to improve it. You know, when I first started at the township many years ago, a lot of times the philosophy was, we are government and, you know, you're gonna just do what, what, what we say and that's, that's the wrong atmosphere and it's been a, a shift in that and so. We want to be helpful and, and have the processes and, and have somebody, if they're looking in Europe, a- after hours, be able to look at our website, look at our processes and, and know what's required and what they can do. Versus having to have a phone conversation with us, so I, I think it's a wonderful program, I was very happy with the results. Um, very glad to see that, you know, we've, we've been putting little pieces together and, and we do have the path to finish those and, and, and get the certification.
Thank you, Tammy, thanks for that overview, anybody have any questions for Tammy? Okay. How about any public comment on this item? I will go to the chat bubble, I see none right now. Um, check the email here. Nothing new on this one, so, um, I appreciate you bringing it down, John, so we could talk about it a little bit more, I, I'm strongly in support of us continuing the process. And I would, uh, so it was moved by Steel and supported by Bernie. Honey? You're muted.
Barnett and Schultz?
Yes.
Yes, Steel then Bernie?
Yes.
Yes.
Don't rimpel them, flood.
Yes.
Yes.
Stimo.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everyone, that passes, um, we have a couple reports tonight, we have our regular police and fire, fire report and then we have our April financial statements. First is item nine A. Got my pen. Police and fire report, they're attached to our board book and they're also on our website, if you want to see what our police and fire have been up to, you can check that out, entertain a motion to receive and file.
A move. Support.
Support.
It was moved. Moved by, um.
Bernie.
Bernie, sorry. And supported by Stimo. Um, they've been very, but, you know, we've been, the good news is, is the fire calls have been, um, haven't been, uh, real, real high, but police has been fairly busy. Uh, so anyway, that's all available, if you're interested in reading, um, what, what they've been up to, uh, and then you can see they've been over four hundred a week on the police side of things. Uh, all in favor, please say aye or thumbs up, aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, that passes, seven zero. And that takes us to the April financial statements. Their motion to receive and file the April, um. Revenue expenditure balance sheet and cash balance reports.
Mr. Supervisor, I make a motion to receive and file the April financials. Statements and thank the clerk's office very much.
Support.
Moved by Flood and supported by Stimo. Any questions, comments, discussion? Again, this is all available, if you want to see our balance sheet and all that good stuff, um, on our website. All right, seeing none, uh, all in favor, please say aye or thumbs up, aye?
Aye.
You want to oppose, please say nay. That passes, uh, seven zero. That brings us to, um, public comment, um, we, this is a second chance for anyone that wants to address the board on anything, um. This is your second, this is another opportunity to do that, I will do it the same way we've been doing it all night, I'll first go to those of you that are online and, uh. On, uh, the go-to-meeting platform, if you want to unmute yourself, go ahead and do that now and I'll just wait a moment. Okay. And then I'll go to the chat bubble and I see none. And let's see, check the inbox, board@oriantownship.org and there are no new public comments, so anyone want to give public comment? It will close public comment and we will bring it to the board. Board comments, number eleven, board comments, we will start, uh, we'll go on, um, just in order on my screen, so Julia, then Mike, then Penny, go ahead, Julia.
All right, it was another very busy day out at Forgotten Harvest today, it was the first time that it was sunny and beautiful outside. Uh, so we had, actually had three food trucks that came in today, which is more food than we've ever given, uh, since we started doing this in March. Uh, they got, in the dry box, it was pasta soup, peanut butter, things like that, then there was, um, milk, a fresh produce box, produce box today. Which was carrots, lettuce, potatoes, apples, fantastic, yogurt, chicken, cereal, orange juice, uh, there were some Lay's potato chips today, the kids were all very excited in the cars for that. And then some lunch meat went out as well, so we, uh, we're out of food again today, so amazing to serve, um, all of our community members and anyone who needs it. Uh, we'll still be out there for the month of June, so if you know anybody who needs it, please just let them know or we can get that to them through the Orion Cares page. Um, and same thing with the Orion Center, that there are, um, there's a pantry available there if you are in need of things, uh, to let somebody know and we can get that to you if you can't get up there. Um, also, I wanted to say, I'm really excited for all of our businesses with the new outdoor space that they're going to be able to use. And then last but not least, a thank you, uh, to Ms. Ryan for serving on the planning committee and a welcome to Kim for joining the planning committee, that's it.
Thank you, Julia, and Mike Flood.
I remind everybody, uh, this Saturday, June sixth, is the first, uh, waste management Eagle Valley landfill, uh, community free dump day for all Orion Township residents. You can check, uh, their website or the township website to get that information, I know Kathy says she's watching tonight, so we want to give her that plug. And, uh. All I say is I pray for our. For our country. And for all our people, we need peace and civility. And, uh. Through the grace of God, that will happen, I, uh, I'm a child of the sixties and I remember very well. All the civil rights, the Vietnam protests and, uh. It's, and then the truest pandemic on it, it's, uh, it's like, uh, history repeating itself, so we just pray for everyone to be safe. And be good Americans to everybody, thank you.
Thank you, Mike, Penny, then John, then Donnie.
So about nine thousand applications to request absentee voter ballots were sent in the mail last week and we are receiving a lot of those back in the clerk's office. Anyone who has questions regarding that, we do have a pre-recorded message on our phone message system and you can also send emails to pshultz@oriantownship.org. Or extension four thousand and one, that's my direct extension and you have, um, anytime you can submit those applications, but the sooner you get those in, the sooner we've, we'll be able to process your ballots. You can also choose for two elections, if you want to receive a ballot for November as well as August, just check dual, um, for both, both ballots or both elections. And that makes it very convenient, the secretary of state is supposed to be sending out applications to the rest of the registered voters in Orion Township, we have about twenty-nine thousand voters. So I'm not certain who has received those yet, but you can look in your mail for those to come directly from the secretary of state. But the clerk's office of Orion Township will be the one that's issuing those ballots, all ballots that are issued to voters registered in Orion are issued directly from the clerk's office. It's a very busy time in the clerk's office, it was exceptionally busy trying to move everything out to the fire station, um, site, but we are doing what we need to do to be able to work together as a township. Also, um, I just wanted to just give a shout-out, I was trying to look up the information while we were in our meeting, so I apologize if I got slightly distracted, but. I wanted to make sure I got this correct as far as the location, on North Point Drive, um, Triville Automation allowed us to use their building on Friday and Saturday. To process a, a distribution from Convoy of Hope, thirty thousand pounds of food was distributed and we're very thankful for those owners allowing us to basically take over that warehouse. Um, for that Friday, uh, afternoon and Saturday morning, that was phenomenal, everyone in the community is working really hard to get food out and I want to thank Auburn Hills Christian Center as well as Convoy of Hope. They brought food into our community and now they're working with Midland to get food into their area as well. A lot's going on in our nation, Mike, um, spoke about that and, um, I think it's really important that people realize that. We are here for each other and we need to work together and sometimes that's difficult, as we have seen, but it's important that we all try to hear each other out and to move past some of our differences. So I want to thank this board, um, also for doing their part to get the people fed. Uh, Julie, I do want to say thank you, I heard you've been out there every week and I just, um, am curious, is it increasing as far as cars coming, the need? Is it increasing in?
Um, we have a lot of repeat, uh, we have a lot of repeat people, so we recognize faces, cars, as people are coming through for sure. Um, we have basically been out of everything before noon in the past, I'd say in the past three weeks, four weeks, um, so there are people definitely. Um, even though people are going back to work, that first paycheck isn't coming for two weeks after that and then if people are playing catch-up, that's why Forgotten Harvest said that they would be out there as long as they could be to continue to help anybody who needs it, they don't care. Doesn't matter what you're doing, what car you come in, how you get there, we will feed you.
That's good, thank you, and that's all I have.
Thank you, uh, John, then Donnie, then Brian.
Going back, I've been back to work now for a little over a week, it is definitely different, so be prepared for you guys when you start really getting everybody back and. I know you've kind of been doing it, but when you open up to the public and stuff, it's just, it's different, that's for sure, different operations, um. Julie, I just want to say, I appreciate the artwork that's always behind you, I'm trying to figure out, I think a lot of it changes, so it's, uh, it's a nice background and, uh. And I, and like I said, I've been in China enjoying it, I like the SpongeBob art, that's my favorite right now, it's behind you, at least that's what it looks like to me, yep. And then as Mike mentioned, I, I was present back in sixty-eight, right in the middle of the civil unrest then, so, uh, yes, this is disturbing, it's tough, nobody wins. Takes a long time for the scars to heal, uh, and sometimes they don't totally heal, as we all know. I would like to commend for all our local urban things, I, I did appreciate, uh, Sheriff Burchard putting out a, a press release and commenting on the subject, but I also want to commend Chief Craig down in Detroit, which is our nearest large metropolitan area, I think. Him and his staff, they've been doing the best they can and dealing with a tough situation and, uh. I know he's been a different party, that doesn't matter to me, I just see him as the police commissioner doing a pretty darn good job and so is his department doing the best they can. And, uh, it's not an easy thing to be in that, it's kind of ironic, isn't it, so in other words. They're supposed to protect protesters, that's what they're, one of their main jobs is and yet the protesters are protesting against them, so. It can't be easy for their individual employees, but they're doing a pretty good job and hopefully it will stay in decent shape and, uh, we'll all get through it. And other than that, just everybody keep staying safe, like I said, I think of it more to, I would. To try not to infect somebody else and stuff like that, I'm not so concerned myself, scared that I still might get it and I still might, but, uh. It's, I, I just don't want to be the result of infecting somebody else because I didn't even know I had the disease, but, uh, so anyway, keep going, let's not get too crazy as things open up here and. Hopefully we can get everybody back on their feet and moving on.
Thank you, John, we'll go now to, um, Donnie.
So I want to, um, kind of just piggyback on Mike and John about the riots that are going on now and I just, uh, I, my heart bleeds for the people and the community, the communities. And the leaders in which that they have to struggle through this and, um, I just hate to see that they're. Destroying public properties and the libraries, it just breaks my heart, so I just, uh, constantly in prayer for the families and the communities. Um, and then just kind of to piggyback on the, some of the com- comments from earlier, uh, regarding Chris and the clerk's department and sometimes, um, we are confronted. With difficult situations, um, between departments and most often, I believe that we are professionals and we handle, um, our business in a very professional manner. Um, however, I have found personally, as a full-time elected fish, official, uh, some of my interactions with the clerk have been challenging. And there are many comments that, uh, supervisor Barnett have made that I have seen to be accurate and I just want to let, um, uh, supervisor know that I support him. And if, um, if there's anything that I can do to help the situation, which I think is an ongoing one, to please reach out to me, so thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bernie?
Okay, so I'll end it on, on good news, um, again, encouraged about the news with, um, uh, you know, what's happening in our state with businesses being able to open. Uh, which allowed, um, Lake Orion's American Summer to, to come back to life. So we announced today that June twenty-ninth through July fifth is Restaurant Week, um, July second is the Pub Crawl, now we fully understand there's gonna be some, uh. Differences in, in years past and we're fully prepared to work through those and make sure everyone's safe and having a great time, but most importantly, um, that we're. Uh, giving a resurgence in our economy here with, for our local businesses, so, um. It's gonna be kind of a crazy few weeks here, making sure we get everyone on board and explain things and sell tickets and get sponsors and so on. Uh, but we're, we're working with all the restaurants, we're looking for sponsors, actually, uh, if they want to sponsor a restaurant so they can be in, um, the Pub Crawl and Restaurant Week. We are accepting those for the first time, so, uh. we are accepting those for the first time. So, uh, I don't know how that's gonna go, but we're, we're doing what we can, uh, to make it affordable for everybody. We know they've gotten hit hardest. Um, so my intent is to make this, this is the fifth anniversary, um, to make this the best one yet, um, even though we have some challenging times, but, uh, to really give them something to look forward to, um, and especially all of our residents, you know, something to look forward to. Finally, something on the calendar that's going to one hundred percent happen. Um, we haven't had that in months. So, um, it's my commitment to, to make it happen and to, um, hopefully be the catalyst to, uh, a better economic future for all of our Lake Orient businesses. So I hope you all, uh, attend or get involved and do it, do whatever you can. Um, so just follow social media, the website, everything, because we're, we're flying by the seat of our pants here, uh, to make it happen. So I appreciate the support in advance.
Awesome. Thank you, Brian. Um, thank you, everyone. Guys, I have a few comments. Um, there is a lot going on and I want to first say thank you to our staff. Um, they have done a phenomenal job, um, rolling with the punches as we have, um, come back to work and we are following, um, the county rules and state rules, the CDC. And we've spread people around and moved people's seats and, uh, I'm grateful that our team has been resilient and, um, come back strong. So, um, thank you to our staff. We have an amazing team and we're just like any family or, or team that has issues and drama and peaks and valleys and, um, we've got a couple of valleys we've got to sort out. Um, and that's the challenge. I, I love people to a fault. I am a people pleaser to a fault. I can't stand when people feel sad, hurt, disenfranchised, which is why my heart's breaking to see everything going on on TV, but I also feel it for our team. And, um, I don't want to fight with anyone either, um, but we have to speak clearly and, um, to our team. And I think that, um, that hasn't been happening and I am committed to making sure that moving forward, uh, we do that. I am going to take a more active role, um, in all of the personnel things. I mean, I've been active anyway from day one. But, uh, I'm gonna resolve, we're, we're working to resolve, uh, long time issues and I will be coming to the board with some plans to do that in the near future. Um, and I'll be asking for your support, uh, so that we can not have these issues, uh, that we had, um, right now. Um, to the employees that are watching, I'm sorry that you had to hear that, especially to Kelly. Um, it's not fun. I'm sorry. That's, that's the best I can say to you. Um, like I've talked to many of you, I would encourage you to reach out to the board members and, and to share your frustrations, even if it's about me, if you want, if that, if that's what you need to do. But, um, uh, there are two sides to every story and, uh, but we want the truth and that's, and the truth, I, I believe wholeheartedly will prevail. We've spent money here at the township trying to resolve some of these long time issues and we were making great progress uh, for a long time, uh, toward, toward that end. So I'm hopeful we can get back on track. Um, and employees feel like this is a safe and comfortable place to come work, um, every employee in every department. Um, I wanted to, um, you guys covered a few things. We did get an email from Kathy Klein reminding us one more time, but Mike covered that. Um, so thank you. That's Saturday. Um, I do want you to know that Forgotten Harvest has been just extremely thrilled with us, probably mostly with Julia because she's been there every week. But, um, we have a meeting with them Thursday about making us a long-term hub, um, even after COVID. Um, which is gonna be really cool. Wouldn't be a food truck every Monday. Um, it would be a partnership probably with Fish, um, to bring lots of great fresh food here and the food they bring is awesome, high quality stuff as Julie mentioned. So that's really exciting. Um, Jenny and I from my team are working on that. We'll keep you updated. Um, we are open, uh, here. We're open remotely. Um, with the governor's order today after this meeting, I'm gonna read through it thoroughly and see if that means we can open by appointment to the public. I think it does mean that. I think it will mean that. So if you've been trying to get in here, uh, but we still have a couple of things. We need to make sure our employees feel safe. A couple more pieces of Plexiglas we need to add. Uh, so that's not gonna happen tomorrow, but probably in the near future. Um, I wanted to give a shout out and say you all received this in the last two or three days in your mailbox, this summer edition of Orion Living. It's an amazing, um, publication. I'm blown away. This was an idea from eight years ago and it's in print. And the sad thing is our, our events are a little lighter this time with the open, if you open right to the middle of the magazine, it's the event calendar. Tons of amazing information in here and thanks to everybody and all the organizations that partnered with us to put that together. So take a look at this. This is not recycled material. This is good reading material. A little bad news and then good news. I, I, the, the, the bad news is just, I'm heartbroken about seeing what's going on in our country. The last two nights I haven't been able to go to sleep because I'm locked on the TV, probably like most of you. Um, and we have such amazing law enforcement. Julia sent me a picture today from the Forgotten Harvest where our police, our sheriff's deputies brought pizza out to the volunteers, um, to, to feed our volunteers that were helping our hungry, hungry residents. And so, you know, the, the one thought I have is what young person in the world wants to grow up and be a cop anymore? Um, that's sad. That's really challenging because we know we have so many, uh, law enforcement deputies and officers that do a phenomenal job and serve with distinction. So I, I agree with, with our, um, with the right to peacefully protest. Um, but I also agree that we need to do everything we can to support the law enforcement officers that do an amazing job, uh, for us. And we have the cream of the crop here in Orion Township and our village. Um, COVID, we've ma- we're making tons of progress. I'll just give you a quick update on that and I will get out of here before nine, I promise. I am on the, uh, county task force. Um, we, um, had a meeting Friday, lots of great progress. There were two days in a row last week. We had zero deaths in the entire county. That's remarkable because there's one point two five million people live in the county. Enough people to fill Little Caesar's Arena sixty times and no people died two days in a row. The other interesting thing, I read an article from, in Forbes that said that forty-two percent of all residents, all, all Americans who died from COVID were from point six percent of our population, which is the nursing home population. Forty-two percent of all Americans that died of COVID died, uh, in nursing homes. And I checked with our fire staff and they said our call volume kind of showed that as well, about half the runs on COVID cases that we had were in our nursing homes. So, um, I'm excited that the governor, uh, moved forward today because we need to get our economy going again. We need to support these local businesses. That's my big ask. You're gonna get tired of me talking about it. Um, thank you to the board for your support of, uh, this initiative tonight that we passed and we'll, um, keep you posted on that. Last but not least, congratulations to Kyle and Jesse Hagan. Kyle is a distinguished member of our Orion Fire Department. They gave birth to twins today and, um, Jesse, or maybe it was yesterday. Um, Jesse is home recovering. The little, little babies are in the NICU, but I, I think everything's going well. I'm gonna check in with Kyle after this meeting. Um, but congrats to the Higgins. They went from two to four real quick. So with that, thanks everyone. Um, stay safe, enjoy the awesome weather and I'd entertain a motion to adjourn at eight fifty-nine PM.
Show move. Support.
Still supported by Flood. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.